Okay. Welcome. We're thrilled to have such a great group of people with us tonight. We have a really, really great agenda tonight. So I am calling to order the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee meeting. It is Tuesday, April 30th, 2019. It's 5:31 and we are at the Nashua High School North Boardroom, 5:31. And Mrs. Porter is here, that's me. Ms. Ho Hensy.
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Oden.
Here.
And Ms. Raymond.
Here.
Mrs. Raymond, Dr. McKinney.
Here.
And we have various guests with us tonight. So, the first part of every Curriculum and Evaluation Committee meeting is a student spotlight. And we, this is our favorite, or my favorite, and I'm sure everyone else's favorite, part of our meetings because we're here for our students and we love to see when you succeed and you're doing well. So we're thrilled to have you here and you make quite a presentation with your neon-yellow shirts, so thank you. So we have Mrs. Coffey, who is the principal at Fairgrounds Middle School, and she's gonna help by introducing. We have teachers here with students and we can't wait to hear what you've done.
Thank you, and thank you for inviting us back. Uh, we're very proud of our DECA team, they work very hard. Um, Miss, with Ms. Galuski and Mrs. Lewis. You'll have to come later on before the school year ends because we have, each DECA class puts on presentations every trimester and it's a presentation of their projects that they do. And they're very creative, there are a lot of critical thinking goes into them and the students present themselves very well. It's almost like you think it's a real business. And it's, uh, it's really, really great and I think the students are gonna be extremely well-prepared for the high school and the DECA program at the high school. We've also worked with the DECA program at the high school. So, anyway, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Galuski and Mrs. Lewis and they'll introduce the students. Hello, good evening. My name is Jean Galuski and I work at Fairgrounds, I'm the DECA teacher. And this is?
I'm Mrs. Lewis and I assist Mrs. Galuski with the DECA team.
And behind us are?
My name is Miles.
Hi, I'm Kylie.
My name is Prithi Mahendra Kumar.
I'm Samira.
And these are four of our students who competed during the DECA. We had a spring conference and we were able to take about 25 students with us to New England College where our state of New Hampshire, we have about four or five middle schools that compete against each other. And, um, they did very well.
They did great.
They did great. So, um...
Who would like to talk?
Prithi, let Prithi talk. Talk about our DECA chapter, our work.
So throughout the year, we've been doing many projects that have helped and fundraised for our school. We have our fundraisers like a, um, sorry. We have the fundraisers like the St. Jude's fundraiser that we're about to do, that's gonna be a talent show. And it's gonna be having talent all over our school that's gonna help fundraise for St. Jude's, which is also a hospital that can't afford to do, um, spend money on, they have to spend money on things but they can't pay for it. So, we also did the Krispy Kreme's fundraiser in November, or on November 6th, 2018.
Yeah.
It was about, we sold Krispy Kreme's donuts for, I think, a dozen, for $10?
$10.
$10 a dozen. And we got all of our student council members active in that and it was very interactive and a good experience to have for everybody.
And that's what helped pay for, that also helped pay for our fundraising to go on this trip, to rent the bus and the emissions to get in. So, the students had to work for this in order to make it happen. They earned it.
Mm-hmm. So we did other fundraisers like our Humane Society Animal Drive, which we did during trimester two. This trimester, we wanted to do a project that would immerse everybody and have everyone included to be able to give back to their community. So we wanted to pick a place where they were able to immerse themselves in the community and we thought of the animal drive. And many people brought in food, leashes, um, let's see, they brought food, leashes, animal toys. We even made during our advisories, we made animal toys for dogs. So, um, other than that, we also did our, as Ms. Galuski, Ms. Galuski said, we did our expo. This happens every trimester and it was very, it includes business-like activities where we made resumes, things like that. And we explained our projects that we made throughout that whole trimester. I made a hotel that was inclusive to animals where you could immerse yourself in endangered animals. Where you were able to know more about endangered species and things like that while being able to be comfortable in your hotel. Other than that, we have made Instagrams, things like that. We had informational speakers come to our DECA class to talk about their experiences in their daily work life. Things like that. Um, our student leadership conferences, uh, that's really it, but we had so many experiences that I really loved. It taught me so much about our school and about the business life. Like I, during our DECA conference, the DECA conference, when we went to the competition, I felt that I was very prepared for everything. And I believe most of the students will say that too.
That's amazing, that's wonderful. Can you just, I, we're on TV.
Yeah.
And so can you just explain for people who might not know what DECA is? Can you just kind of explain what that is?
Well, DECA is more of a business program where we are able to...
Sorry.
Well, well, it's a business program where you're able to immerse yourself in the business life, learn about tips, tricks, inform yourself about everything like, um, resumes, how to make resumes for your college life, or how to get a job in your high school life. Um, we've done interviews where I was extremely prepared because I've been trying to get into other high schools as boarding schools and it was a very good experience to have when I was trying to get into those schools. Um, other than that, we've had informational speakers, we've had, um, amazing activities as Ms. Galuski has taught us a lot about.
Thank you. And to piggyback off of that question, you know, it's also about entrepreneurship, it's about hospitality, business, marketing, um, so all of that kind of, in 60 days, I try to do the best to try to expose the students to certain parts of that. And the final project is the expo. And the expo is something that if you would like an invitation to, I would be more than happy to...
I would love an invitation.
Okay, perfect. So our, it will be in June, so our next...
So you'll, you'll let Dr. McKinney know and he'll...
Sure.
...sit on to me?
Yes, yes.
A June, a June expo.
And then you can push it forward or forward it?
Okay, perfect.
That would be great.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions or comments? Raymond?
I have a, I have a very elementary question. What does DECA stand for? Like D-E-C-A, it's an acronym, yes?
Yes. Correct, but it doesn't stand for anything anymore.
Really?
They changed it.
It used to stand for Distributive Education Clubs of America.
Yes.
And they've taken that name away and it's just the letters now.
Just DECA.
DECA with the letters, with the four entities, with the four areas.
Excellent, I'm very impressed with all of you, wonderful job.
And the last piece, do you wanna talk about it, Maria?
Oh, sure.
Mrs. Lewis, sorry.
So we, um, we were able to put together some, several items that would make us eligible for the Outstanding Middle School DECA Chapter. And so our students worked hard and we took all the things that Prithi had talked about and we put, formed a document, the students formed a document, and we submitted that. And because they were eligible to, and they achieved what's, more than six out of 11?
Yes, tasks.
They had to, had to achieve at least six out of these 11 specific tasks. Um, they were successful in doing that and so we were awarded with the Outstanding Middle School DECA Chapter Award. And I'd also like to say that our students did so well at this competition, Fairgrounds won at least one of the awards for each...
Category.
Each category.
Each category.
So, we had a few first place, a few seconds, and a third maybe.
Right.
But they, they all won, they all won. It was wonderful.
It was awesome, it was really cool.
The excitement on the bus on the way home was just...
It was. And the best part, in being a teacher and, and being able to be in the moment at the time, and being blessed with watching them have that taste of success. And knowing that we are making that alignment, that bridge to the high school level, that these students are going on and they felt that, they know what that feels like, they've got the taste. And now they're own, you know, they're just moving forward now, at, you know, at the high school level.
So is there a high school DECA program?
Yes, yeah.
So they're transitioning, right?
North and South have DECA programs, yep.
Oh, good.
Yep. Can I just mention one thing?
Absolutely.
So last month, you recognized our students for their essays and Prithi wasn't able to be here, but she was one of the winners. And they're gonna be recognized at the Loyalty Day Assembly sponsored by the VFW on Saturday and they're gonna get their awards.
Wonderful, wonderful.
And we hope Prithi stays in the National Schools, she's a great student.
Wonderful. So what grade are you all in?
We're all in eighth grade.
So they're, you're all in eighth grade? So you mentioned that it went on for 60 days, so is it each trimester? Is that how it works?
Each, each trimester I have a section.
Okay.
So in total, I, I range between what, maybe 80 to 90 students that are able to go through the school year getting the same curriculum.
Wonderful.
So, but then the DECA team is something different where, um, 25 to 30, 30 is our cutoff with the state. So I can take 30 of our, between 80 and 90, then I can take them.
So do they meet after school then?
Um, sometimes we have study groups, sometimes it's advisory time, I'll pull them together to kind of talk with them. But the majority of them, majority of students that are in the DECA team, I also see them throughout the day.
Okay.
So it kind of makes it easier a little bit.
Okay, very nice.
So, but there's always ways, there's email and Instagram, you know?
Yeah.
You know, they, they, they can get in touch with each other.
Perfect. I know, they're perfect. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? No? This is amazing, thank you so much. You just look so great in your shirts, your team spirit, and I can tell by looking at your faces how proud you are of yourselves, which you should be. Teachers are proud of you, your principals, your Board of Education is very proud of you, so thank you for all you do and we wish you every success.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming. We love having kids here, thank you.
Definitely.
Kids and teachers, not just... Okay, we are going to have another student who will be here with Mr. Richard, who is the principal at Nashua High School South, but he's still at tennis?
Mm-hmm.
He's at tennis practice? So, um, I guess we'll get start, well, when he comes, maybe we can take a little break if that's all right with you. I don't, I'm sure he has a busy schedule. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is the Elementary Literacy Pilot. And so we are going to be having a PowerPoint presentation. We have Erin Anderson and we have Abby St. Pierre, oh my God, like I don't know her. Oh my gosh. It's like when you have kids in the class and you're looking at a kid and you're going, you're, you, 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 okay. All right, so they have prepared a really informative PowerPoint presentation that was included in our packet. Um, so they're gonna give a big overview of the process of the pilot and the recommendations from the team, so thank you.
Okay. So I know that some of you have seen these beginning slides before. I'm just going to quickly reiterate just so that we can go, we can really start at the beginning of the process to make sense of what we're bringing forth to you tonight. So, we began lifelong literacy in 2013 to 2017 where we really did a lot of professional development around setting up a readers workshop, understanding a balanced literacy approach, helping to develop lifelong readers and building stamina through the independent reading. And we did this in all, with all 12 elementary schools. We then in 2015 brought in the Benchmark Assessment. Some of you might know it as the BAS, the B-A-S. And there was training for three years. And it started off as whole overview training and scoring training and it evolved into analyzing it and using it to inform instruction. So this assessment, it quantifies reading behaviors and helps with teaching kids word-solving strategies and within, beyond, and about the text comprehension influency. That's what it measures. And the assessment provides an instructional level which teachers would use for guided reading, small group reading instruction where they'd be working with kids in their zone of proximal development. It also can inform independent reading and if a child needs an intervention. So it's aligned with our Tier Two interventions for reading, which is LLI, okay? We then from 2015 to 2018 began writers workshop training. And we adopted the Writing Units of Study and brought in the Columbia Teachers College to do summer institutes for teachers. That really helped with setting up the writers workshop, but also learning instructional best practices to support young writers and be able to differentiate your instruction from kindergarten through fifth grade. So, right now, we have a readers workshop structure through the lifelong literacy in all elementary schools. We have a, an assessment that supports a balanced literacy approach, which is the Benchmark Assessment. And we also use iReady to form those groups alongside with the BAS to give us some detailed data too. And teachers right now are using a writers workshop approach using the units of study.
So that brings us to where we are now, which is, we're really in need of resources to support the structure and balanced literacy approach that we've been doing professional development on for the past years. So we are looking at resources for reading mini lessons, which would be the whole group instruction, guided reading, which Abby spoke to, which, we get that information from the Benchmark Assessment, and reach students where they are in their zone of proximal development to move them forward. Word study, and then we were looking at online independent reading resources to help support their, the students' independent reading. The first step in this process was working with groups, different groups of people across the district and developing rubrics for what the criteria was that as a, as a collective group we were looking for in all of these areas. So rubrics were developed for mini lessons, guided reading, word study, and online reading resources. We began with the reading specialists because they really are experts in, in reading. And brainstormed what the must haves were for each area. We researched other districts who had been through pilots and, and used exemplars from that. We drafted a first draft of the rubrics, brought them back to the reading specialist and revised them. We then brought the rubrics forward to the ELA Steering Committee, which is made up of teachers from across our district, and revised them again there. And then they were converted into Google Docs, which were provided for the pilot teachers to fill out monthly. And then after the presentations from each publishing company on each of the piloted resources, the selection committee completed the same rubric after each presentation. We worked at the end of last school year to find teachers who wanted to pilot. The response was overwhelming. We had an application process and basically where teachers were selected based on trying to get as much representation from all 12 elementary schools and all different grade levels. After-school meetings were held throughout this school year for teachers to be able to collaborate. They attended summer trainings last year and also filled out monthly rubrics that were based on a scale of one to four, but also some anecdotal notes that were really helpful in, in the selection process. Overall, we had approximately 50 teachers in kindergarten through fifth grade that piloted resources. All 12 elementary schools were represented in the pilot and all grade levels, kindergarten through fifth grade also were represented. Did we wanna pause or keep going?
Is this an okay time to pause?
Yep.
Okay.
So the selection committee, again, there was an application process and we were looking for representation from all 12 elementary schools. We were also looking for representation from different stakeholders. We had parent, we had a school board member, Dr. McKinney was a part of the committee, and we had middle school representation. And we met for three days, on the first two days. The publishers went ahead and gave a presentation that really went in-depth about what the resource had to offer and how it aligned with our district goals. And on the third day, we reviewed feedback from pilot teachers as well as the feedback that the selection committee had given. We compared that information side by side, looked at how it rated on the criteria scale, and then really looked in-depth at the anecdotal notes that the pilot teachers had provided. At the end of the third day, we were able to come to consensus in all four areas. And I feel it's important to say that the discussion at the table was amazing. It was really, everyone at the table really had the best interest of the students in Nashua at the forefront and it was really just an amazing process to be a part of. So thank you to those people who participated in that. The selection committee is listed here. Like I said, we did have representation from all elementary schools in one way or another. We also had district representation and middle school representation.
So we thought it was important to just have a shared definition of what balanced literacy is. A balanced literacy approach uses both whole language and phonics. That the goal of a balanced literacy approach is to include the strongest elements of each. And the components of balanced literacy approach are as followed. It's the interactive read aloud that becomes your mentor text in both your readers workshop and your writers workshop. You use guided reading, shared reading, independent reading, interactive writing, shared writing, independent writing, in a readers and writers workshop approach. And have a word study block for your Tier One instruction, but that word study is also embedded throughout your reading and your guided reading block. This is the flow chart that we use as a, as a district visual. I also thought it was important that you could see where each of these resources would fit in throughout our day. So we always start with the assessments to help us drive our instruction.
Sorry.
That's okay. And then you have your interactive read aloud and that's where you're reading aloud and having those deeper discussions with students so that they already know the story. And you're using that to be able to model or be able to show them examples for your readers workshop and your writers workshop. I'm gonna stay focused tonight in the readers workshop, okay? So, in the mini lesson, our mini lesson would be where students would be exposed to grade level standards for seven to 10 minutes. And that's where we were picking the resource for our reading mini lessons, okay? On the writing side, that's where the Lucy Culkin's Writing Units of Study sit, okay? And then we have what we would call our work period, which is a longer period of time so that we can really meet where the students are at. So during that time, the teacher is doing guided reading, she, and that's where she's working with kids on their instructional levels. And that she would be conferring with students on their independent reading or using assessments at that, at that time. Where the students would be independently reading, responding to text in their reader's notebook, tracking their independent reading with book logs. They might be in a book discussion group or they would be maybe at their daily three or daily five centers, okay? And then they meet back as a class for a closing, which is about five minutes. And during that time, they go back to the mini lesson that started the readers workshop and they review the mini lesson objective so that it helps the kids to transfer that to their independent reading. And they have, they make observation assessments at that time, they might do a reader's chair and exit slip. And then separate to that is the word work block, which is about 20 to 30 minutes. And that's where kids are really going over grade level phonemic awareness, phonics, word study, vocabulary development, spelling, and handwriting. But also during, if we go back up to the work period, they might be practicing in their daily five centers some of that and working on that with the teacher in their guided reading also. That's, that is at their instructional level.
Okay. All right, we're gonna take a break now so that we can have Mr. Richard come up. He's the principal at Nashua High School South.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Very proud night for me. We have Sahith here and he was able to participate in the United States Senate Youth Program. It's a pretty prestigious recognition, so each high school can only send one applicant into the state and it's not an easy decision for us. The applications are, these guys send in some pretty, pretty lengthy resumes, they have to write an essay, and usually they have a focus with the future in service. And then with the state level, there's only two representatives from New Hampshire that go down. So not only does Sahith represent National South, he also represented the state of New Hampshire in Washington DC for about a week. And I'm sure he'll tell, tell you more about it, but also walks away with a $10,000 scholarship being part of this program as well, so not too shabby. A week in DC and, you know, he just had to meet with me and go over his application but, and an essay, so I'll hand it over to Sahith who's a great student and just a role model at National High School South and makes us really proud, so why don't you tell him about your week in the process, all right?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Richard. So if you guys didn't pick up already, my name is Sahith. So I was able to participate in the 57th Annual United States Senate Youth Program and it was from March 2nd to 9th and I was one of two delegates from New Hampshire. To be selected for this program, as Mr. Richard said, I was nominated by him. I wrote an essay on the Federalist and Anti-Federalist Papers and how they affected our future, completed an interview, and then after the interview, then two kids were selected as the delegates. So the main goal of this program is to create a national nonpartisan initiative to provide high school students an opportunity to develop an understanding of America's political processes and inspire careers... and inspire careers in public service. And then, as he said, in addition, I got a $10,000 undergraduate educational scholarship.
Not too bad.
Yeah. So while I was in DC, I was able to meet with our nation's leaders from every branch of the government. So I'll give you a rundown of like just about every day. So on the first day, oh, just keep in mind, this isn't everybody, I just shortened it. So on the first day, we had the opportunity to meet the other delegates and essentially meet with the, I guess, the future leaders of our country. And then we were able to talk to previous USSYP delegates and essentially make connections for the future and understand like how this program affected their life. So then on Sunday, the 3rd, which was like essentially the first real day of activities, you could say, we got to see Mount Vernon, the historic home of George Washington, and we talked to Jack Warren, a Revolutionary War historian and an executive director at the University of Cincinnati, I believe. And then on Monday, we got to hear from Judge Robert Henry, former chief judge of the 10th District of US Court of Appeals, and Chief Justice John Roberts, as well as Senator Joni Ernst of Iowa. And then we also got to talk to Julie Adams, who is the Secretary of the Senate, and a few other important speakers that day. The next day, we got to hear from HUD Secretary Carson, Secretary of State Mike Pompeo, Senator Richard Blumenthal of Connecticut, and we went through another diplomacy situation. Essentially, we went to the US Diplomacy Center, and that's where we got to meet Secretary Pompeo, and they put us through like a mock simulation, I guess. And they split the kids into different delegations. So I was part of the diplomatic group from the country of Garusa, and then there was another fake country, and then there were some other delegates, part of the UN, part of the United States. And then there was like an NGO, and then we had to work together to come up with a compromise for basically solving a GDP for a country while there was humanitarian and economic crisis in the country, essentially. Yeah. Yeah, it was really cool. On Wednesday, I talked to Martha Radatz, ABC's Chief Foreign Affairs Correspondent, Armando Vericchio, the Italian Ambassador to the United States, and I got to speak with Senator Hassan of New Hampshire. In fact, she even offered me an internship for next summer. I have to see if I take that offer, but I think I'd be a fool to not take that offer. Then on Thursday, we talked to Brian Kamoy, who's an administrator for FEMA, and he's also a USSYP alumni, as well as Judge Henry from before. Senator Michael Bennett of Colorado, who's also running for presidency. And we met Donald Trump, President Donald Trump, sorry. On Thursday, we had a town hall with the students where we talked with Brian Lamb, the founder of C-SPAN. He essentially moderated the town hall, essentially. We went to Arlington National Cemetery, visited the Pentagon, and we talked to General Paul Selva, who is the Vice Chairman of the Joint Chief of Staff. And then we did our farewell speeches, and we had our dance. And then on Saturday, all 104 delegates essentially parted, and we went back on our own ways, except for the New Hampshire delegate, we came back together. While we were only physically together for seven days, I'm still friends with most of the delegates. In fact, I've been in contact with several of the delegates today from all over the country, from the Montana delegates, the Arkansas delegates, Wisconsin, Louisiana, Mississippi, and even the other delegate from New Hampshire. I'm happy to call all these people my close lifelong friends, and I hope other students from Nashua can take a part of this program in the future. It was really life-changing. If you guys have any questions, I'll take any questions.
I am blown away. Oh, my gosh, what an experience. Are you a senior?
Yeah, I'm a senior.
And what are your plans?
So next year, I'm going to MCPHS. I'm on a seven-year accelerated medical program. So I'll go to LECOM after my three years of undergrad school, and essentially I have a no MCAT clause, I just have to maintain a certain GPA, and then I go to med school directly.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Oh, my gosh. I'm thinking, what did I do that week? What an experience of a lifetime. I'm just so pleased that you were able to have this experience. It's really gonna be one of the defining things of your school career, I think.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone can top that.
I can't imagine what would, and it's so good to see your enthusiasm. You can just tell it's just spilling out of you. And, you know, for it to have happened previously and you're still, you know, just full of the excitement and the inspiration that you got from that, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing to see, and we're so thrilled that you're here.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments from anyone else? Ms. Oden.
I just want to say, it was just awe-inspiring listening to you and what your experience was, and congratulations.
Thank you.
You can see great success in your life ahead, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll offer my congratulations as well. I think, I just feel so privileged to have you representing Nashua in such a prestigious and important thing, and to have gone through the application process and be selected as one of two from the state is phenomenal. So you really are a credit to your community, and I'm sure your family is very proud of you as well, so.
I like to think so. Thank you.
No, and this is what school is all about. We want to see our students succeed in whatever they do. This just happens to be your niche right here, but, you know, we've had students before you come in, and, you know, we have students come every time we meet, and we're just so happy for your success, and we hope that when you graduate, you have fond memories of Nashua.
Yeah, for sure. It's my understanding that this is on YouTube, so.
It will be, yeah.
It will be, yeah.
Okay, all right. So I know that sometimes our school district gets a hard rep for not preparing kids for the future, but I'd just like to say in my experience, while I do believe there's some stuff that can be changed, I do think that my education has prepared me very well for the future, and all of my teachers were extremely supportive of me through my college applications, and even not through my college applications, just ninth to 10th grade, 10th to 11th grade, 11th to 12th grade. And I even had some teachers help me out in this application process. So I definitely will have very good memories of Nashua.
Well, thank you, we appreciate you saying that.
Administration?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Richards is definitely, Mr. Richards is definitely the best principal. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. What you're doing is laying the foundation.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Because, you know, as an elementary school teacher, we don't see this all the time. So like, all of this that you're doing is laying the foundation so that our students are able to succeed.
He did learn to read in elementary school, I'm sure, so here we are.
All right, thank you.
So basically, with all that we have said prior to this, we did come to a conclusion and a consensus with the selection committee and decided upon four resources, one in each area, and I put that into a three-year implementation plan because to give all of these resources at one time to teachers would be overwhelming, and we want to make sure that we're able to provide the support and professional development alongside the resource. So for year one, which would be the 2019-2020 school year, we are looking at implementation of a guided reading resource, which is Fuentes and Penel Classroom. It goes from kindergarten through fifth grade, and as we mentioned before, guided reading is teaching responsibly to the individual student's strengths and needs at the student's instructional level, and is done in small groups, and the resources that we have selected as the selection committee do support that. There is a lesson plan folder with each text. Each grade level would get over 200 titles with six copies of each text with various genres. The books are high interest, and the instructional levels in each grade level span a grade level below and a grade level above to be able to support all the learners in that grade level. The text gradient matches the benchmark assessment system. There's a professional development video library that has videos of full lessons being taught. It has an implementation video as well. There are print resources. It's really extensive for what they provided online. And there's a formative assessment that goes with each text, which mirrors closely the benchmark assessment, which would help teachers to be able to support the students moving from level to level.
I just wanted to add to that, that in your packets, you have a sample lesson plan from one of the texts that is provided. However, we also brought some more of the resource so that you can look at it. We bought, we brought a couple of boxes of the books with a couple of the real folders. We just couldn't put that in the packet.
We'd be looking at the second year of the three-year implementation plan, which would be 2020-2021, and we'd be looking to implement word study and phonics resource, which would be Foundations in kindergarten to second grade. Foundations is designed to be used with a literature-based reading instruction. It's systematic and multi-sensory approach to teaching and practicing phonemic awareness, phonics, word study, vocabulary development, spelling, and handwriting. It does address both manuscript and cursive. Professional development is provided, there's an initial training. They also provide virtual coaching for teachers, and there's ongoing site-based professional development. Foundations is a kindergarten through third grade resource. However, the year is, there is a prerequisite for third grade, which means that the students are required to have had second grade to be able to begin the third grade. So that's why in year two, we'd only be looking at implementing kindergarten to second grade. Therefore, for Reader's Workshop mini lessons in year two, we'd be working with Fuentes and Penel Classroom, and we would be working with third through fifth grade teachers on the implementation of that. The Fuentes and Penel Classroom mini lessons are concise and explicit. They're designed to be taught whole group with a purposeful application in building students' literacy power. The mini lessons fall under different umbrellas, is what they call them. The umbrellas are management, which is rituals and routines, literary analysis, strategies and skills, and then writing about reading. Each lesson has an anchor chart that serves as a reference tool for the students as they apply the principle to their own independent reading, and there are also formative assessments and record-keeping available. Both of these resources have extensive online resources as well and professional support for teachers. There's also, the mini lesson books are for kindergarten through third grade are over, fourth and fifth grade are still in production, but will be completed, I believe, this summer. So there's also some Foundations resources to look at as well. In year three, which is 2021 to 2022, we would be looking at implementing Foundations in grade three and Reader's Workshop mini lessons in grades kindergarten through second grade, and also adding in for additional support, an online independent reading resource, which is Raz Kids. There are 3,000 leveled texts that can be searched by level, theme, or interest. It provides home access. There are formative assessments that assess comprehension, and there are fluency quizzes. And there's also reports for students that teachers can utilize to see how students are performing in their independent reading, what they're taking away from their reading. It would group students and show class-wide progress as well.
Could you talk for a minute about the, about Fuentes and Penel? Because if you're not familiar with that, teachers, we know who those people are, but just to see that, can you talk about their experience and why this is such a good choice?
Yes. Irene Fuentes and Gesu Penel have been in the balanced literacy business since the 70s. I'm sure that all of us have had the white guided reading book since I think it was first published in 92. They have, they have since updated and updated their research. But they really are the gurus of guided reading and balanced literacy approach. And they, even the other materials that we really looked at, they had consulted with the publishers of these materials, but these were the materials that they put out themselves. That for years, they did professional development and they did professional books for teachers, but now they have really found that it's also important that teachers have the lesson plans and have the curriculum in front of them because there are so many different instructional levels in many different classrooms.
So these two women are really the gold standard, and the materials that we're getting are written by them, so.
Fuentes and Penel have also published the Literacy Continuum, which spans pre-K through eighth grade and breaks down each area of literacy, reading, writing, word study, guided reading, and it really breaks down, you know, how to move kids forward and expectations that we're looking for.
And we should add too that they were the creators of the benchmark assessments, and also the creators of the lifelong, I'm sorry, the LLI as our intervention. So the Tier One and the Tier Two, by adopting these, will be on the same text gradient, and also the students will be hearing the same language. And a lot of the books from the classroom to the intervention will have the same characters and the same series.
And you know, you're in a room of educators when everyone goes, "Oh!" When they say that.
True, it went over very well. Can you talk a bit about Foundations also because that program also has a long history? So for people who are not familiar with that.
Yep, so Foundations is through the Wilson Language Training Facility, which is based in Orton-Gillingham research and all of that, and it's based, the only thing they do is word study, and they do it well. They see themselves as a professional development company, which is why they want for the students to have the second grade before they go to third grade. They really pride themselves in the professional development that comes with it and really want students to understand language. And, again, they're the people who kind of created.
They're the gold standard, so we've really gone with the top-of-the-line resources for our students in making these choices.
Foundation, Foundations also offers a very systematic approach to teaching phonics and word study, handwriting, and spelling, and it all goes together, and it's the same routines each day, and those routines build on each other per grade level. And that, so students are really learning the same strategies and building on those strategies, especially for students that struggle learning with letter sound knowledge and phonics. It also goes with Wilson Reading, which would be a Tier Three intervention for students that struggle with decoding. And they use the same pictures, they use the same sound cards, which is very helpful for struggling readers. Also, what's very nice is that in that 30-minute block that they're teaching the whole group lesson, and they're really doing a lot of interactive activities through that, they also have things that they can practice within that work period of the Reader's Workshop during their daily five centers. So they're able to put games in there for kids to practice what they learned in whole group, and they're also able to differentiate so that they could have different activities out at different times during that independent work time.
Can you also, I know that there's been a lot of interest on the board in manuscript and cursive, and while Foundations was not chosen because of that, it is a component. Can you talk about how that's integrated and not a separate lesson?
Yeah, like Abby said, there's a systematic approach, manuscript and cursive. Cursive would you be seeing in Level Three? And it is integrated in to, it wouldn't be in isolation, but would be integrated into the word study block. And there is, again, a systematic way to teach manuscript and to teach cursive, which is embedded in the Foundations resource.
Good, thank you. All right, do we have any questions, Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. Delighted to hear that it's integrated. I don't think standalone.
using for those spelling bee practices?
I don't really know how to answer that question. What I can say is that the material isn't, hasn't been implemented here yet.
Okay.
So, I don't know what they're using for the spelling bee.
They used to have, like, a booklet with so many hundreds or thousands of words, and I don't know how they go about attacking that, because it seems formidable. I just wondered if this was the top of the line, if this was involved in that program. I didn't know.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. How will this interact with or affect our current bookcases? I don't know what you call them, but the bookcases that are in all of the elementary classrooms with the lettered books for levels, you know, like, we have A to whatever, Z?
Yeah, so there are many schools that do have, some call them bookrooms, some of the reading specialists have them within their office, and they are leveled text to support guided reading, and those books will still be able to be utilized by teachers. These are additional resources to be able to get similar resources in every school and to be able to make sure that we are following, you know, a best practice guideline for guided reading. There also, the professional development that we're going to be offering teachers is not going to be just on this resource, speaking just about guided reading, because you asked about that, but we're looking for best practice in guided reading and understanding why we're teaching kids at their zone of proximal development, understanding how to analyze reading behaviors and how we can move students forward, understanding when a student is ready to move forward, and also, understanding that, you know, there's a place for guided reading, there's a place for independent reading, there's a place for whole group, there's a place for all of those components of balanced literacy that Abby spoke about within the reading block. So, teachers will still be able to utilize the texts that they have in their schools. As far as guided reading, these will be additional resources, and professional development will happen as well.
Okay, and then, my other question is the money question. So, you have a plan to roll this out in the fall, right, for 2019? So, is this already in the budget that we passed and we're waiting on the Alderman?
Yes, it was included in the budget presentation, and there's an allotment set aside in the curriculum budget for year one.
Fantastic. Okay. So, oh, then I guess my, sorry, one more follow-up question. Are you looking for a motion at this committee or at the board level to approve the purchase of these things with that, or at the finance committee to go forward and purchase them? Because I assume that it's over the $5,000 threshold.
Oh, definitely, yes.
Is it five or 10? I think 10,000. 10,000. Well, I assume it's over the $10,000 threshold, needing a board motion.
Yes, we'll be looking for a motion to adopt this three-year implementation plan and the resources with it coming out of this committee and then to the board level.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Oden?
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to thank you. This was so well-done. Your whole process was very impressive, very inclusive, so thank you for that. I have one question about year one, the guided reading resource, the last bullet, is formative assessment with each text. Can I ask you, is that something that is computer-generated? Is it oral or written?
Thank you for asking that. So, the formative assessment with each text is an informal running record. It is not a have-to. It's after they are reading, if their observational notes are, if they would like to take an informal running record on a student's oral reading or a comprehension, a couple of questions, that's all that it is.
Okay.
It's guiding, it's guiding questions to get, to solicit a little more information on kids' reading.
Okay, thank you. One more question. I know you said the cursive is integrated. Does that start in grade two?
The cursive begins in grade three.
In grade three?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what traditionally it had been. Oh, I used to teach it the second semester of second grade, but I know a lot of people started in third grade. Thank you. This was one of the best pilots I've seen, the way you structured it and the way you came to the conclusion of which resources would be best for our students, so thank you.
Thank you so much. I think on top of that, we really, we need to thank the pilot teachers from us and the selection committee. The pilot teachers went above and beyond. They took on a new resource. They went to summer training. They came to monthly meetings after school and problem-solved together. They were in constant contact with the publishers. They received additional professional development outside of, you know, their normal school day, so it was a lot, and they all had positive feedback.
Well, thank you, and we're going to miss you. I'm sure Erin is going to miss you, but good luck.
I'm not talking about it yet.
Oh, but we wish you good luck, and they are receiving a great leader up there in Concord.
Okay, Ms. Ohensee?
Thank you. I want to know how this new program aligns with play-based learning in kindergarten. Will there be alignment issues? Has that been thought out?
All of the resources are developmentally appropriate for, you know, the age. The mini lessons are 10 minutes. We're not asking students to sit for long periods of time at any grade level, and a lot of the learning happens in individualized, hands-on approach, so I think that it will align with play-based.
Also, at the kindergarten level, the students are really interacting and playing with language. They're doing a lot of, they're having a lot of shared reading experiences. There's a lot of partner reading going on. They're playing games at that level, and they're really, they're in authentic literacy activities that are going to differentiate themselves based on where the students are and their interests. And that was one of the things for the selection committee that was a have-to with these guided readings, were the high-interest texts, and how that was the feedback, was that students were so engaged in whatever level they were at, whether it was fiction or nonfiction, they were completely engaged in the texts.
Thank you. What about students that are not quite ready at kindergarten, that whether it's tension, developmental delays, that is incorporated? There's ways to keep them going but not feeling like they're failing?
So, within the workshop structure, it provides multiple opportunities for students to hear grade-level material but also be met where they are. That was one of the main purposes of going in that direction a few years ago, was to be able to meet each learner where they are and move them forward at the pace that works for them, and at the same time, working with great materials and resources to be able to close that learning gap as well.
Right, the motivation of the materials, but not pushing them so that when they do blossom, it'll just come.
Yep, and the whole premise of Reader's Workshop and all of the research that supports that structure goes on what motivates students and choice and text and independent reading at their level, but also being met where they are at their instructional level really supports that motivation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to say how thrilling it is, as a former teacher, to see one of your goals on the first sheet, developing a lifelong love of reading, because that's what all of this comes down to. What good is it if we have instruction if kids don't want to read? So, it's, you know, that is the overarching thing that we're always looking for, and I think that the quality of these texts will do that for our kids. I want to say that I was there for the three days, and it was just wonderful. This is the work of the district. This is where the magic happens, and I can say that from 8:00 to 3:00 for three days, every adult in that room was on task and engaged.
We did give everyone lunch.
You did. You did, okay. But you know what? Even at lunch, they were talking about books, so it was just such a dedicated group of people with excellent leadership, and all of the pilot teachers and the students in those classrooms. I think that pilots are where the innovation can take place in education, and, you know, over the years, we've all been through many pilots, and it's all because we want to learn and grow as instructors, as adults, to do the best for our kids so that they become lifelong learners, too. So, thank you for everything that you've done. It's really greatly appreciated. This was a wonderful presentation, a great process, and it's really exciting that it's going to start next year, so thank you. Okay, I have a really lengthy motion that I had. This is it. It's really big, but we need a motion coming out of this committee to bring to the full board, so, and if you can just listen to make sure I have everything correct. I think I do. I ran it to Dr. McKinney. He says it's good, so, all right. So, I make a motion to accept the 2019 ELA Selection Committee Three-Year Implementation Plan with resources as follows. In year one, 2019 to 2020, as a guided reading resource, Fountas and Penel Classroom in grades K through 5. Good? Okay. In year two, 2020 to 2021, as a word study phonics resource, Foundations in grades K2. As a Reader's Workshop mini lesson resource, Fountas and Penel Classroom in grades 3 through 5. Yes? Okay. In year three, 2021 to 2022, as a word study resource, Foundations in grade 3. As a Reader's Workshop mini lesson resource, Fountas and Penel Classroom in grades K through 2. As an online independent reading resource, Raz Kids in grades K through 5. Yes? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have to find my paper for voting. Okay. All right. Okay, so, Ms. Porter votes a very enthusiastic yes. Ms. Ohensee?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay, so, 3-0, the motion passes, and this will go before the full board at our next meeting. Okay? All right. Okay, and I know you brought a lot of goodies. They're all over on the table, so I'll wrap the meeting up, but as the meeting ends, people are invited to look and to touch and feel. There's nothing like touching and feeling a brand-new book, and I think that's it. Is anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, and just by consensus. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, great. So, we are adjourned at 6:30, yeah, 6:35.